Or has already been, the city's already been notified that it's coming down. And the sign that's being removed to allow for this, the new sign, has to be larger or equal to that sign. So, in the memo, there's a note that Lynn Street was named. Since in talking with the petitioner, because that one had already been counted, we're going to, they're using 6,600 North Sheridan as the replacement sign, so that one was removed. The notice was given to us February 25th of 2015. That sign is 1,345 square feet, so not quite twice as large, so that works to use that sign. So, in your memo, that's listed as a waiver, but that's no longer required in this case because they found a sign that they can use. And incidentally, the waivers become moot if this is denied. Regarding spacing from on-premise signs, the requirement is to be at least 50 feet away. It is, must meet that. From other off-premise signs, and then you've just seen that, there's another one within 2,000 feet, and that sign is located between War and Meadow Brook, near University. So this requires a waiver of a land development code, excuse me, Unified Development Code, Section 8310(c)(2)(2) or 3, which is both for off-premise, whether it's a special use or not. So the staff recommendation is to deny that waiver. Regarding spacing from residential zoning, you see there is R1 zoning just above. The requirement is to be 500 feet away, and it's the sign, which is about, if you can see where I'm wiggling my cursor, where that would be, were about 460 feet to the north to get to the R1 zoning. So that would require a waiver of UDC Section 8310(c)(2)(4). Again, the staff recommendation is to deny that. Regarding sign area, as noted in the beginning of the memo, it's within the requirements for a special use, so no waiver required. Same with landscaping, the proposal is to remove approximately 400, excuse me, 590 square feet of trees and brush, so that the sign would be visible, essentially. So, I've just put a note, because there wasn't a landscaping plan provided, that when they come through for their final approvals, the landscaping needs to be met. And I'm going to switch to a more recent photo that was provided to us. Maybe? This gives you kind of an idea, this does not exist right now, this is what is proposed. This is what you would see. And so the brush and trees would be right in front. That would be removed. As far as frontage, it's located, of course, behind the Public Works Facility along the You have to have a minimum lineal feet of 100, they have over 250 feet. For setbacks, this also, from their site plan, they're proposing five feet from the property line, so that would require a waiver of UDC 434. And the staff recommendation is to deny height, 35 feet, compliance, lighting, same thing, they would just simply need to meet requirements, should it be approved. For background, subject property contains 14.14 acres of land. It's developed with the City of Peoria Public Works Facilities. It's Zone C2, surrounded by the same. In 1931 through 63, it was not in the city, it was part of the Richwoods Annexation in 1964. So it was in the county, zoned residential as of the late 40s. That's the record that they were able to provide to me. As far as the Development Review Board analysis, no impact for the standards, no detriment to, well, rewind. No detriment to public health, safety, or general welfare. No injury or to other property, or there was diminished property values, and no impediment to orderly development. Staff is finding that the review, that those standards are not met for the discussion just given. As far as adequate facilities provided, yes. Same with ingress, if we go back to their site plan. There's proposed access from the back. Forms to all district regulations, no, hence the waivers. Critical success factors and strategic plan goals, grow employers and jobs, smart population growth. So some additional notes to kind of wrap up. The purpose statement of the ordinance, I'm going to put the signs up, I'm also going to show you. This is the view going to the east. And then the view. So you can kind of see these side by side. This is the off-ramp, if you go to War Memorial, if you're headed west. Purpose statement of the ordinance is adopted by City Council, includes the following language. Sign regulations, controls, and provisions are intended to aid in traffic control and safety, preserve and protect property values, lessen congestion of land and airspace, provide against undue concentration of signs which distract and endanger traffic safety and traffic flow. Establish reasonable standards for commercial and other advertising through the use of signs in order to recognize the rights of the public on the roads, streets, and highways. Staff believes that the proposed off-premise sign does not support these statements. Two, the legislative intent of the ordinance is adopted by City Council, includes the following language. Regulations of the location, size, placement, and certain features of signs is necessary to enable the public to locate goods, services, and facilities in Peoria without difficulty or confusion, and to encourage the attractiveness of the community, and to protect property values throughout the city. Interstate 74 through Peoria is one of the most scenic of all urban interstate routes. The development of the roadway along Dry Run Creek has caused interstate, the interstate to be a lower grade than the surrounding properties, and created and retained a natural urban tree cover on both sides of the roadway. Billboards and other large signs are absent from the scenic drive from downtown to the North Woods Mall area. Adding oversized billboards at this location will conflict, will be in conflict with the above-listed legislative intent that I just read. Three, approval of the sign and requested waivers would set a precedence to allow additional signs. Staff is particularly concerned that if waivers are provided for this sign, there would be no basis going forward to recommend denial of additional signs on I-74 through Peoria, or for other areas in Peoria where billboards are requested. Four, the proposed 672 square foot sign would be located adjacent to an off-ramp from the Interstate 74 that's effectively a three-way split in the road. At this point, drivers are already receiving input from highway signs and needing to negotiate multiple lane changes and speed changes. And finally, five, requests for on-premise signs along I-74 have also been denied. A more recent example, in 2012, upstream western located at 1600 West War, requested variances for setback in size for a 225 square foot sign on the rear of the property along I-74. It was denied due to proximity to other existing signage, lack of hardship, and potential effect on surrounding properties and their value. The staff recommendation is to deny this request. The petitioner is present, and I can answer questions as well.
Any questions for the jury? Any name of the petitioner, right, come forward, please? Get your name and address for the record.
Dry Avenue, in West Peoria, Illinois, 61604. Work at 911 Southwest Adams here in Peoria, 61602.
Thank you, and proceed.
Waivers, I want to just throw one thing out.
Speak into that microphone.
Do you hear me at all? I guess I got to pull it up a little bit. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to offer to waive the five-foot variance setback. We won't need it.
Okay.
Off the top. Regarding safety, I'd like to see any research that's been done. Federal Highway Administration study that was completed in 2012 that says that digitals are safety neutral, and are not a safety hazard. If you don't have the study, I'd like to see it if you do. I'd like to look at it if we need more time, then. I'd like to see it. When it comes to the waivers that we are petitioning for, number one, when it comes to residential spacing, 500 radial, I believe is what it has from the center post, we would be at 460. And it is a residentially zoned property, but there is no residence on the property. I do have a light study here. I would like to leave here for anybody to look at and review. The light study is from the company that manufactures the digital board that shows that'll have no effect on any properties around it. Let me hand that to you right here. That's for you to share. The, so the waiver for residential that we're seeking, and again, this is on the Public Works Facility owned by the City of Peoria, 3505 North Driz Lane in Peoria. We feel would have no, and no way will affect any property values of any residential properties, as it won't even be visible from any residential properties. Also, there are aerial photos that I supplied.
Yes.
And basically, from the proposed board nearest to the properties, along with that light study, on the exact location, for the sake of residential property owners in regards And so we feel like this, and we're in the spirit of the code here, because in no way, shape, or form is this thing going to be seen from a residential property and vice versa. And it won't be affecting any property values. The waiver for 2,000 square foot spacing nearest the off-premise sign, again, in the spirit of the code, the placement of the proposed billboard at the Public Works Facility is consistent with that spirit of the ordinance, as no other off-premise sign can be seen anywhere near from this location, and vice versa. The waiver request for 2,000, excuse me, the waiver request for the, or the number of signs on a controlled access highway, in this case, it's I-74, again, state-controlled road. I know IDOT spacing requirement is 800 lineal feet on the same side of the road, which is meant to keep clutter out. Our nearest one would be 2.9 miles, almost three miles away. And with all due respect, when it comes to the aesthetics of the area, you know, there's a cell tower right there next to where we would be putting this board, and the salt facility right there, in the exact same location. I don't think it'll take any of the beauty away from those structures. So looking at, again, the waiver for the number of signs on a controlled access road, which we're talking I-74, that is, it's an archaic, old rule that I don't even, I don't even think our zoning guy knew exactly when and why that was put in when we met with him. But we feel like that's very, it's archaic, and 2.9 miles is a long way from any other I do have, I do have some photos, but I think you've already put them up of what it would look like.
No.
I brought five.
Is that the same photos of what we're looking at?
Yeah, I didn't anticipate you having those three, but I brought them just, I brought them along.
And this document that was handed to me, this Federal Highway Administration Driver Visual Behavior, this is the most current copy of this, this is six years old?
Yes.
So the things that would be applicable in this might not be applicable today, being six years later? And the makeup of the sign, is it LED?
Yes, it's a digital billboard on both sides.
Okay.
And everything's federally regulated as well, as far as foot candles.
Any questions for the petitioner?
Yeah, Mr. Youngman, I have a couple of questions. And maybe, Kim, I think you, this is your case, right? So it might end up being for both. I think I need some clarity on some of the waivers and the discussion, because we're kind of hearing two versions, in a sense, two interpretations, anyway. The first waiver is a very general thing that says it limits the number of off-premise signs on a street designed as a freeway access controlled to two. This would be the fourth. Could you explain to us, and maybe I'll ask Kim to start with, where's that measured from, point A to point B? The fourth, in what segment of Interstate 74? I'm not clear on that.
So I have, and it's in the packet. So the Lynn Street one right here is what was just approved.
Okay.
So you're asking the actual lineal feet?
Well, no, I'm saying it says that the proposed sign would be the fourth on a street designed as a freeway. So where does that?
The entire, but you're almost looking at the entire piece.
What, I guess what piece are we talking about?
Everything that goes through the city. So do we have a thorough fair plan map?
Through the city, east to west, or west to east? I-74, through the, from the river to the corporate limits to our northwest, basically?
On that street. So we have a thorough fair plan map?
To Fort 74 on the west?
Under justification.
If I may, I can bring the map that I'm referring to, I just need a quick second to grab it?
No, no, that's okay. So you're just saying it's the extent of I-74 through the City of Peoria?
Is it how it reads? Oh yeah, if you don't mind. It's on my table. Thoroughfare location, off-premise signs shall only be permitted on, it's a key paragraph, on streets designated as principal arterial on the official thoroughfare map of the City of Peoria, except as provided in 5A below. And then it says, here's your key paragraph, "Up to two off-premise signs may be permitted on access-controlled freeways, and up to two off-premise signs may be permitted on access-controlled expanses as indicated on the thoroughfare map of the city, subject to meeting all the other requirements." So it just simply says, on that road, Shannon did go run down to get that map that I'm referring to, that this is referring to.
So the, to clarify then, I don't think I need a map, I mean, is the answer that that is, the ordinance reads the extent of I-74 through the City of Peoria?
As is designated on that map.
Okay, so it's not just the extent of I-74?
Clearly, I mean, you just have the map.
Okay, okay.
But you're saying only two signs can be on that?
But it's saying two, yes.
Does that mean two in the same direction, or two in both directions?
It doesn't say, and it's a permissive ordinance, so we understand two. And we know that there are more than two right now, but two. So it would be a waiver, is the point. However, we're recommending denial, and if it is denied, the waivers become moot. Right?
I'm sorry? What was the last?
Well, we, staff is recommending denial.
Right.
If you deny, and then City Council denies, and the whole, you know, the waivers become moot.
I understand. Right, right. My point about the first waiver is that's a big-picture thing. In other words, the other things are, could almost be moot theoretically if that waiver wasn't approved, and if they're only allowing two, that designated segment of the freeway.
And that's, that's our ordinance. Because in a lot of other communities, there's more than.
The way I'm understanding it.
Okay, so it ends.
This is the map of that section I said they're referring to.
It's through the city, is that what you were saying?
It's saying that here is I-74, here, here, in the soul color. You guys can, get that background thing. Right. And we know it's already keyed, it's weathered.
Right. If I'm reading that correct, that is the entire extent of I-74 to the city, that's okay. That's just what I was asking.
What does, what does this thing say? So I can't really read on that.
Yeah, just.
I think if I can get closer, I don't know.
Does this sign actually sit on city property, sir?
Yes, we've been in discussions with Mayor Artis and Patrick Urick. We initially went and talked to them when, you know, we were looking at the deficits that the city faced financially, and we felt like it'd be a great, a great deal to look for property that the city owned, where we could put an asset, and the city would benefit from that financially.
Would this be a lease from the city, a long-term?
We have several leases of city property currently, with quite a few, with the City of Peoria, and this would, this would also be a long-term lease of the city.
Okay. And if I may, just a few more questions, and maybe to Kim, if you don't mind. The second waiver that's listed, which was replacement signs, did you clarify that that has essentially been clarified as not being a waiver? Did I hear you correctly?
Yes, what was originally included with the application is one that they're essentially double counting. So now they've provided one that, that works, so yeah, that's.
So that is not a waiver in this case?
Correct.
Okay.
We actually have, we have 19 that were taken down over time, more than that, but 19 that have never been replaced. So, you know, our intention's never been to be to add more outdoor advertising signs to the community, I think, and we've had great discussions lately with the city about that.
I think I better make this statement real quick right at the moment. I think I'm going to have to recuse myself from this case, just hearing what, something that he just said popped into my mind, because our business does benefit from them, and I think I better turn this over to.
Okay, so noted. I'd like to continue with a few more questions, please. I'm just looking through the waivers, the, and Kim, maybe I'll ask you this, there are one of, it's the one, two, three, the fourth waiver, which is the 2,000 feet from any other off-premise sign permitted on either side of the street. I'm a little, I'm confused in that Mr. Youngman is saying 2.9 miles, that's a lot more than 2,000 feet.
That's two different things.
Go ahead, Kim.
So he was saying 2.9 miles to the next billboard on I-74, referring to probably a number. But the, as far as billboards themselves, this is a, oh, that's kind of not going to help.
I understand, I understand the point. It's not on a particular thoroughfare, it's within a radius.
And there's, we know that there's one about 1,640 feet to the east already.
What is the staff's, and I, you know, we've seen the rendering, and I, without, you know, physically seeing it and looking at, is the intent really that they, you don't see one sign when you're seeing another sign? For example, that's when it's kind of pulled together?
That is the spirit of the code, to keep clutter out. And we feel like we're really in the spirit of the code with this waiver request.
I guess I understand the technical difference now, that it's more of a radius than a linear issue.
And if I could refer you under additional notes on page five of the memo, where I've got the two sets of intent statements, it's visual clutter, but it's congestion, property values, you know, safety, you know, for traffic, the avoidance of difficulty or confusion, attractiveness of the community, there's a number of things. And I also have the state regulations there, you know, along similar lines.
Is there, Kim, is there, has Public Works, particularly Traffic, Mr. Stoffler, someone along his lines, have they examined this in terms of their opinion of vehicular driver safety and so forth, distraction, et cetera?
So that is something that's stated for the state to look at, they have a whole separate process after this to go through. Internally, they, there is a review, Public Works does see it, they return no comment for this.
Okay, so there wasn't a positive or a negative, it just said no comment?
Right.
So do we, does the city have any, there has been no IDOT review, does it have to go through municipality first and only then to IDOT? Or was IDOT's position on this specific sign?
I do not want to be on record speaking for IDOT. I have spoken with IDOT, just to understand what's next, what they need to go through. And I do have a copy of that, and they will need to show that they meet, that I can say factually, that, to be, I mean, I can, if you wish, I can read what the state has given me that they need to meet in terms of separation. There is a clause about merging traffic and obscuring, however, it is a completely separate process, and I want to be very careful, I'm in no position to speak for the state.
I understand.
But they do, they will, and they did indicate, you know, sometimes a sign company will talk to the state first, sometimes they will, you know, just to kind of see if it works. But as far as the process, part of the approval with the state is to show that they have approval from the city.
Wonder if I may make a suggestion to Mr. Youngman, that I think, and other council people, pardon me, commissioners, see if you would agree with this, but I think it might be a good idea to get more information, perhaps if Adams Outdoor could get, if it's possible, I mean, you can tell if it is or isn't, but if it was deferred, and at the next hearing, there was a position from IDOT on safety, is that feasible?
Yeah, I can get, I can talk with them. Typically, how this works is, we work through, and I just did one in Peoria Heights, off of War Memorial, a little over a year ago. And how it works is, we get a, we get a permit from the local municipality first. I have knowledge of what IDOT needs, requirements, spacing, safety, everything. And would typically never, ever start on something without knowing.
Sure, makes sense, yeah.
We must have, you know, we must get the local municipality permit prior to But we must have, you know, we must get the local municipality permit prior to even applying for-
Because I do understand we're talking about some different things, in other words, even if IDOT has it in writing that from their opinion, their standards, they don't consider it unsafe, let's say-
Sure.
The city still has ordinances that we, that we, that we follow as well, but I, I personally think it would be extremely helpful to have IDOT's position on, because that sort of first and foremost, I think, would be the safety aspect, I'm, I'm in no position to make a judgment on that, if that's a distraction or-
Why, I wanted to provide that-
Yes.
That's case study, and, uh, there's, I've, I've not seen anything from the city.
Okay, which we have not seen either, obviously.
Anything about safety, because there is nothing.
Is this a ten cent, a ten-second digital, or what's the ten-second?
Yeah, we're federally, federally regulated, uh, no motion, and it's every ten seconds, uh, there would be a, a different advertisement, and again, with off-premise compared to on-premise, we can't have motion, which is probably distracting.
There's no digital on the bottom of it that's running across that this is, this is one on, is that what you're looking at right now?
It's a, it's a static image and an instantaneous change, yeah.
Correct. That's what I was-
Yeah, yeah. Do, do other council, uh, commissioners have questions?
I have just a few questions on the, on the lease of the city.
We, we, uh-
Can't hear.
Have given a lease agreement, had negotiations with Mayor Artis, as well as Patrick Urick, and, uh, it is in their hands right now. I think we've, you know, we're, we're pretty much on the same page verbally.
But normally those go 29 years, or 10 years, or, I mean, the lease normally, from your experience before?
Yeah, it's a 10 plus 10, it's a, we, we have a really large investment, two, two digitals that size, um, it's a very, very sizable investment we have in that upfront. We pay for everything, city doesn't pay for anything, we continue, we do maintenance, you know, we're, we're the only full-service outdoor advertising company anywhere near.
Does the city get any benefits from this rental?
Yes, they will.
Is this something that you can share with us in terms of financials, or?
Um, I can, I don't know.
The reason I'm asking is, I, I-
I think it would be something that you might wanna, you know, if you could talk to Patrick Urick about it, maybe?
President of the city council.
I don't wanna give it out, but it's, it's pretty substantial, I will tell you that.
Well, I'm, I'm looking at it from a budget perspective, and I, I, I feel we have to look at maybe, the only concern I have is the, because it's right on the off-ramp, but other than that, I'd just like to see maybe some input back on how much it will benefit the city, especially with the current budget status.
So Jim, is this sign identical to the one that's on Lynn Street?
Yes, uh, it'd be, it'd be very, very similar.
Okay, and I assume, you know, without any specifics, I know you're expanding, but ad sign, the advertisements must be going pretty well, I would imagine, I would imagine that's a prominent one there on Lynn Street, that's a really prominent sign right there, so I imagine that probably generates a good revenue for your company and so on.
Yes.
And when you guys evaluate the sign there at the 74 West, any thoughts about going even further west, like in the future, in addition to this one? Because I know the whole, there's, between there, the next stop is gonna be Route Six, basically.
Sure.
I don't even know if that's much of a draw, advertising, if you even consider that as of yet. I'm going somewhere with this, I know there's no specific-
Right, okay. Erica, I think that's, that's a good point, and I think when you look at the, uh, what I would say archaic old rule that was there with four, or with two, on an access, on an access-controlled freeway, um, which I-74 is what we're talking about here, um, the city has grown a lot, and, and cities, you know how it is, they'll, they'll grow different directions, and grow at different rates, um, and it is definitely growing out that way. And, you know, for us, one of the other things I'd like to mention is, uh, you know, we've got some really nice letters back from Amy Dotson, who's with the city police, she does all the social media, thanking us because of our digital networks, you know, we use those for Amber Alerts, we use them to help FBI, as well as local law enforcement, and, uh, one of the things that we've talked to the city about, that they really like, is we want, you know, we're gonna offer up space on these, on the board both directions, to help get communication out, that they wanna get out to the general public, because people are getting their news and their information so, so much differently than we all did, growing up, a lot of them are getting it mobile, um, and, uh, you cannot turn the billboard, you can't turn a billboard off, or you can't pause it, DVR it, um, it's a great and effective way to communicate, and, you know, we've, I know, as far as the city, uh, Public Works facility manager, as I talked to him, one of the things he liked is the fact that he could also get messages out about when they're gonna come out, uh, like with snow plowing, you know, parking, no parking, uh, with streets and things like that, so, that's another benefit that we're throwing in along as the mon, as well as the monetary. And it gives us something in an area where we don't have anything anywhere near, and so it would give us pretty good coverage of, of the city.
Neither you can answer, answer this, or maybe Kim, really, but how long is that stretch of 74, coming off from the Murray Baker Bridge to perhaps Route Six, really, about the boundary, that edge of Peoria, just about, you know how long that stretch is, roughly? Does anybody know?
From where?
From, from the bridge, from Murray Baker Bridge, really, because we're, we're coming in, that's where you have three times-
Right, yeah.
From there, going to-
I would guess six miles, maybe?
I would say about, I would say about six-ish, six to seven, most, yeah, something like that.
So we're, I mean, we're, again, we're talking, we're, we're like half the way away from anything else on that.
Yeah, I'm just kinda questioning the issue of whether or not that would be considered, with the fourth sign, is that still considered clutter, in my opinion, even within three miles, four signs, within three miles of that clutter? I understand the ordinance was written, but that's kinda what I'm thinking about right now. Thanks, Jim.
Sure. I, I, I would go back to what I had asked previously, I'm sure it may not be ideal for you, but would you, uh, would you consider requesting a deferral for 30 days to get some more information from IDOT? We could perhaps have time for the city to review the, uh, federal safety information that you had provided, and, uh, maybe clarify some of these waiver items for, it'd be a more straightforward decision, I think we would be better informed, uh, if that were done.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I would say, um, you know, safety is an issue, and we definitely, you know, appreciate that, and, uh, if there's more time needed, I have, I'm not opposed to that at all. Um, I, I do know that, you know, the process is, is a pretty long process-
Stan.
And, and we've invested a lot of money already with engineering, and, um, but I will, I will say that IDOT will be very limited, um, as we, we follow protocol, and that is local municipality first-
I understand, I understand.
That's just how it works.
I think also, I, I think I would like to see, if possible, a, a statement from traffic for the city, if, if this is deferred as well, so there would be something besides no comment, I, I think we, because I think, I think a lot of it, in my mind, boils down to that issue, perhaps, is the, and I, I don't wanna be a, a judge of, uh, traffic safety protocols and so forth, that's, I don't feel qualified to say that, so. May I, uh, any other questions for the petitioner? Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Youngman, and, um, we would open it up to, uh, any other public comment at this time, is there anyone in the audience who would want to speak in favor or against this particular case? Seeing none, um, I'll, we'll close the public hearing, and, uh, may I have a motion, please?
Uh, so move for a 30-day deferral.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? None? All in favor, say aye? Aye, all opposed? That passes, thank you very much.
Much, ladies and gentlemen, appreciate your time.
Okay, we can grab, uh, Mr. Weisahin.
Yes, you need a break.
What's that?
I need a break.
Yeah, how, what time is it?
Need a break?
No, I'm okay.
You okay?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it's only two, I thought it was later than it should be. Okay. We'll get the, uh, we'll get the chairman back in here, in his chair.
Okay, I'll get him.
Okay, thank you, and continue on.
Next case, 1824.
This is a request to hold a public hearing and forward a recommendation to the city council on the request of LaShan Nun for Law and Order Academy to obtain a special use for a neighborhood youth center in a Class R4 single-family residential district for the property located at 1825 North New York Avenue, partial identification 1804-226-015. The petitioner's requesting to obtain a special use to establish a neighborhood youth center, the Michael Heimberg Neighborhood Youth Center, as a location for the youth associated with the Law and Order Academy. In terms of parking, the property contains, um, a garage, driveway, and on-street parking is also permitted, um, no additional parking is proposed, um, a dumpster is not proposed, um, no additional landscaping is proposed, and no additional landscaping is required. Um, sign information was not provided, um, the Development Review Board, um, comment is that one freestanding sign, um, is permitted not to exceed 20 square feet in area and five feet in height, a separate sign permit would be required if a sign is placed at this property. No additional lighting is proposed, and no exterior changes are proposed, um, the existing house and garages will remain. Uh, the property contains .7 acres of land, um, it's zoned R4 single-family residential and surrounded by R4 on all four sides, um, and it's historically been zoned, um, single, single-family, um, and two-family dwelling from 1931 to 1963. The DRB examines each application against the appropriate standards found in the Code of the City of Peoria, um, and the Development Review Board believes that all of the standards as outlined in the memo have been met. Uh, the Development Review Board recommends approval of the request, with the condition that one freestanding sign be permitted not to exceed 20 square feet in area and five feet in height, and a separate sign permit is required. Are there any questions?
See, none, petitioner, let's come forward, please. Petitioner here, Shannon?
He's here.
Yeah, you are, Hightower.
Could you pull the microphone down, and, could you state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is LaShan Nun, 1606 North Wisconsin, Peoria, Illinois, 60603.
Thank you, is there anything you'd like to add to what Shannon said?
No, sir.
Any questions for the petitioner? You're getting off easy today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make the motion, entertain a motion.
Anybody like to provide public testimony for or against this case? Okay, could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Tracy Jones, I now live at 615 East Forest Hill, but I own a house at 1817 North New York, which is just two houses down from the proposed, um, youth center. So, I have a couple concerns, um, we have a lot going on in that neighborhood, there's some crime, there's some, um, a lot of mobility, people move in and out, they don't take care of the houses around there, so one of my concerns is, who is going to be there, what hours of the day, um, what are they actually using it for? We have a center right down the street at, uh, St. Bernard's, it's the East Bluff Community, um, Center, I think that's what it's called, at St. Bernard's, the old school, so I guess the question is, why can they not use some of that facility? I know the Boys and Girls Club uses that facility, there's some other organizations that use the space there, um, so I'm really concerned about having this truly in the middle of a residential area, and especially if they're gonna put a sign out front, property values are not good in that area anyway, and so that's a concern also.
Thank you. Anybody else like to provide public testimony for or against the case? Come on up, ma'am. Make sure you fill out one of those blue sheets too, if you haven't done that already, please, thank you. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
My name is Regina Kahoon, I live at 401 East Archer, Peoria, Illinois, 61603. And I just think that the community, well, where she's getting the house for, will be good because of a lot of kids in the area, all over, yes it is, the East Bluff, the East, um, the church down there with the, um, with the kids, but, you know, in the daytime, you know, we can use that community for the other children in the neighborhood, and I just think it'll be good for the neighborhood.
Thank you. Officer?
Officer, I mean, Carrie Hightower, 1839, North New York, I mean, North, uh, North Wisconsin, Peoria, Illinois, 61603. Um, as you know, I'm the resident officer up there, and, um, everyone is talking about the Boys- Okay. Everyone is talking about, uh, St. Bernard's, the, where the Boys and Girls Club reside, and what everyone is failing to understand is, when they go for the Girls and Boys Club, it, it's a cost, that's why all kids can't go to the Boys and Girls Club. It's a good thing, I'm not gonna knock that, but if we have a place for other kids to go, to study, to do, um, homework, and they do bring mentors in to also help that out, um, we're just, they're just trying to make another avenue for the kids. Also, it's building up the neighborhood, when you have kids in the neighborhood that's not wanting to do their best, this is another avenue, and they work closely with me, they work closely with Ms. Nun, and also with, um, other people that's gonna be inside the building. All we're trying to do is have another avenue for the kids to go, and it won't be, even, even your, should I say, per se, bad kids, take a look at some of these, and they're even doing better. And we have a couple of kids in, in our, um, in our group, that was that way, but once they turned around, and that's all we're trying to do, is build another, um, avenue for them to go, and to stay straight.
And you stated your, your house is on Wisconsin right now?
Yes, I'm the resident officer that's up there.
For that, up towards the shopping center?
No, I'm right at the corner of Nebraska, and, um-
Oh, okay, I gotcha, I know exactly, okay. Yeah, yeah. Mr. Hightower, and maybe this is for LaShan, but would either one of you, just for our benefit and others in the audience, could you give us a quick overview of what Law and Order does, uh, and, and what, uh, as the neighbor had asked, uh, how, how generally this, this would be used as a youth center on a daily basis?
Well, it's taking in, well, we take in pretty much all kids, I can't say that, but when we started it, it was taking in youth that was, youth that was, um, being, um, not of good neighborly people, and we're taking in youth that was breaking windows, um, causing crime, that was the core of the Law and Order program. Now that it's been up and running, um, we took a couple off, and it's a lot of other ones that want to be in the, wants to be in the Law and Order. Um, we can't take them all, I will say that, but I would love to take them all, but money is always an issue. Um, but Law and Order was just that, showing the youth that they can have something better in life, if they work hard, if they do a job, and also they do get paid, so, they have, but they have- So, they had, but they have to meet some of the requirements, too. They gotta do good in school. They have to, um, if they're, if they're struggling in school, we always find a way to help 'em out with tutoring. So, it's, that's what Law &amp; Order is about, just trying to keep them on the straight and narrow, and also put a little something in their pockets so they don't have to go to the next store and try to steal, and they don't have to go to the next kid and try to take, or anyone else and try to take. And they, it teaches them how to, some save money, um, but that's still a work in progress right there.
And these, uh, these young people are riding their bikes or walking to this, to this place, obviously, uh, and they're gonna be there during, it's not, uh, an overnight thing, is that right? Is it, is it like what, I'm just curious, what kind of hours, when it's used as a, because some of it's gonna be used for, the garage will be used for storage of the lawn mowing equipment, which is kind of a core part of what you guys do, right?
Yes.
But the house itself would be a youth center, so maybe you could explain a little bit to us, uh, like roughly the number of kids and, and, and the hours, I guess, in a sense. I'm just sort of asking, think, if I were a neighbor, I'd be curious about that, too.
Yes. I mean, it's no different than, I, I can't say how many kids, but probably at, in one sitting, it'll probably be about fifteen or sixteen kids in the house, at one sitting.
Mm-hmm.
But it's no different than now. You have groups of kids running around there, and a lot of 'em don't even live in the area. That's terrorizing the neighborhood. So, it's, I think it'll be more of a safe haven because they know if we step out of that door and they're acting that way, not saying they don't know me, 'cause they do know me, not saying they don't know Miss Nun, 'cause they do know her. And that stops a lot of kids, because when she sticks her head out, I would say, they have more fear of her than they did with me. So, I, I would say it, it'll be a, it'll be a plus. Plus, I mean, as far as fixing it up, you know, the house is looking a whole lot better now than it was when the person had it, not trying to, um, down him because his family knows what this can do, 'cause he, he's also spoken up and talked to us about how the kids were doing now and how they used to be. So, I, I mean, I can't, you know, I can't speak negative about it because I've seen what it done to some of the kids that I had to grab hold of. So, I know, I know it works.
Okay, thank you. So, your funding? Where, where do you get your funding from or your support? Let me put it that way.
Well, I'll tell you how it started. How about that? How it started is in my pocket and Miss Nun's pocket. That's how it started. But then, um, the city came along and was, gave us lots, which we appreciate a whole lot, and it's donations as well, and we're, we're, we keep on working on more and more donations because we want more and more kids to join.
Thank you.
Officer, will be, will there be somebody at the house all the time?
Yes, when it's open, there will be someone.
Adults and kids?
What's that?
Adults and kids?
Yes, there will be an adult every time it's open, yes.
Anything else?
I have a question for Miss Nun. Can you share a little bit?
Eric, wait, um, I need to close the, any public people before she can come back up and talk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Anything else, the officer? Thank you. Anybody else like to provide public testimony for or against this case? See Nun, okay, Miss Nun, you come ahead. You have about five minutes to wrap up, and see, you wanna pull that mic down a little bit? Thank you.
Is that better?
That's good.
Oh, my turn now.
Eric.
Can you share just a little bit about some of the community involvement that you've been involved with over there in the East Bluff for the past, uh, few years?
Sure. Like I said, my name is LaShan Nun, and I am invested in the East Bluff. I've been a resident of the East Bluff for about twenty-six years now, and I live the East Bluff. I sleep the East Bluff. I'm everything in the East Bluff. When the kids, when the office is not open, the kids know where I live, they come to me no matter, all time of night. So, I can tell you that the center will be open from like eight to five, but then I should also tell you that our kids, they deal with a lot of issues. So, I'm up, and Officer Hightower, we're up throughout the night dealing with our kids and their issues. So, the office will be eight to five, but we do have emergency hours where they come to and need a safe place. They may be kicked out of their house. Things may be going on at home. They, they run to us for safety, and I am the board president of the East Bluff Neighborhood Housing Services, and, um, we do so much. I'm all about revitalizing and changing the neighborhood that I live in.
Thank you. Any other questions? Can we close the hearing then? Evan, uh, could you please read the findings of facts? Thank you.
This, uh, these are the findings of fact for a special use. Uh, the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, or general welfare.
Not be detrimental. The special use will not be injurious to the uses and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the proposed purpose already permitted, nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood in which it is to be located. None. I would say, none. The establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. None. Will not impede. Adequate facilities, access roads, drainage, or necessary facilities have been or will be provided. Yes. Adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets. Yes. Also, kind of a moot point. The proposed special use is not contrary to the objectives of the comprehensive plan of Peoria. Yes. If a public use or, or a use providing public utility service that such use or service shall meet a demonstrable public need and provide a public benefit, which it does, the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district, which it will. It will. Any concerns on the findings of facts? May I have a motion, please? Motion in the second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Miss Nun. Thank you. Yeah, thank you for what you do. Thank you, Officer Hightower. I grew up on the East Bluff, on Seneca. Long time ago, but I appreciate you, what you guys are doing in keeping our neighborhood safe. Thanks. Madeline, you did, or do you need a break?
I could use a break, but she can read it into the record.
Uh-huh.
She can read it into the record, I don't have to be here for that.
The next one?
Yeah.
You want me to wait for her to come back, or did she say, she's gonna go and do the next?
I, it, it's up to you, if you want me to wait for the minutes, or otherwise, we can read it in the record, and I can read slowly.
I'll wait for the paperwork to come around, and then we'll...
Yeah, there you go.
Get it from there. Can you read it in the record without her taking minutes?
I thought I should just wait.
Madeline, next case, PZ eighteen twenty-five.
A public hearing on the request of Carol Thier Prill to rezone property from a Class CN Neighborhood Commercial District to a Class R4 Single Family Residential District for the property identified as parcel identification number eighteen eighteen one fifty-two zero zero two, which has an address of thirty thirty West Marquette Street. I've got it up on the screen, just a Google Street View of the property. It is this smaller, single-story building here. The, uh, property is, is a small parcel, it's point two-two acres, um, and as you can see, it is developed with an approximately fourteen hundred square foot, single-story commercial building. The zoning, uh, surrounding the property is a little bit of a mix. We have R4 Single Family Residential zoning to the south and east. To kind of show you here. Okay? Here's the subject property outlined in red. Um, across Marquette Street to the north is also a Single Family Residential, and CN Neighborhood Commercial is located immediately to the west on the corner. Historically, the property has been zoned commercial. It was originally platted in nineteen forty-seven, but development didn't occur until nineteen sixty-three with that existing building that you see today. It, uh, was originally built for offices, medical, chiropractic. Has been in use, um, until as, as recently as late last year, when now, now it's been current, it's vacant. The, uh, staff review utilizing the LaSalle factors, um, found that to change the zoning to residential does not pose any kind of, um, negative impact to the neighborhood. Um, the rezoning would allow for additional residential uses, which is also surrounding the property, so it's in fitting and keeping with that. Um, we do note, however, that since it was originally designed and built as a commercial building, there is likely interior and possibly exterior modifications, renovations that would be required if the zoning is approved to residential and ultimately occupied as a residential dwelling unit. And the, um, petitioner is aware of that and, and has, um, provided information from contractors of the, the needed modifications, mainly dealing with ingress, egress for emergency of the, of your, of, of the resident. To conclude, the Development Review Board does recommend approval of the request to rezon the property to R4 Single Family Residential.
And the only reason it was CN, when we had the new designation stuff, is because it was a commercial building to rezon?
Correct. Yeah.
That's, those two area, I mean, that's kind of spot zoning to me, but...
Well, you know, it is adjacent to a corner, so I, I understand the commercial zoning because of the existing structure, but on the, you know, east side of the property, you have an entire residential neighborhood, so...
Yeah.
The petitioner is present, if you have any...
Questions for the city? Yep. The idea of a question is the, uh, if, if, if an individual wants to use it as a residence, does it have to be rezoned?
It does require...
So, residential is not an approved use in a CN?
Not as a single-family residential unit.
Right, uh, mixed use, I mean, it could be... Multi-family. I see, that's, that's really the, the issue here.
The desire to use it as that single-family dwelling unit that is...
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for the city? Ma'am, you can come forward, please. Could you please state your name and address for the record?
Carol Thier Prill, and I, I reside at thirty-five oh nine West Florental Court in Peoria, and this is property that I own and had a business there myself very recently, within the last year.
Is there anything that you'd like to add to?
Uh, not really, because I want it rezoned because it seems like businesses do not thrive very well down there, and, uh, there's just people who need homes, and I thought this would be, uh, a positive influence in the neighborhood rather than to have a commercial building sitting empty.
So, it's your intent to change this into a single-family home, then?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Any questions for the petitioner? Kim? Does anybody like to provide public testimony for or against this case? Madeline? Commissioner, listen, would you like to read the findings of facts, please?
Findings of fact for rezoning is a, uh, negative or no negative impact on the following. Existing uses of property within the general area of the property in question, no negative. The zoning classification of property within the general area of the property in question, no negative. The suitability of the property in question to the uses permitted under the existing zoning classification, no negative. The trend of development, if any, in the general area, no negative. And please, if anyone has anything else to say as I read through these, let me know. The suitability of the property for the use or uses proposed by the proffered amendment, no negative. The investigation of other suitable ways of accomplishing the proposed purpose of the mandatory petition, no negative. The health, safety, and general welfare of the city in the general and immediate area of the property subject to the amendment, no negative. The enjoyment of property by neighbors for its intended use, no negative. The grant, that granting the amendment is consistent with the purpose and intent of this development code, no negative, and the, that granting the amendment is consistent with the purpose and intent of the adopted plans, no negative.
Thank you. Any comments on the findings of facts that were read? See Nun, do I have a motion?
So moved. To approve.
We have a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you.
So, Miss Prill, I'm not sure if you were present earlier. This will be forwarded to the city council on June twenty-sixth.
Next case, PZ eighteen twenty-six. Kim? Okay. I, I asked him if you would consider that, if that's... I still have the rose, and I'm gonna finish it for Ida. There was no comment from the Michigan's Traffic Department about this.
from the Michigan Traffic Department about this. What do you think of this case, too? So we needed more time, and he said, you know, obviously prefer to have it approved right away, but of course...
So where'd you come from?
Oh, were ya?
Oh, switch over, huh?
Uh-huh. Switching.
Yeah. The traitor, you left him.
Oh.
How long were you over there? Were you really?
Oh, I see. I thought you meant like you, you... Might be a little bit easier. I had dealt with the kind. This case, we got off from the city. They'd be, they'd do a 10-year plus, you know, 10 plus 10. And I said, with the city, that's city owned property, so I mean, it's incomprehensible to track back.
So you're really not...
Yeah, that I don't know. That I don't know.
No, no.
They, and he said he has, so that would be, I mean, it better be. Since you guys, they have a good deal. But they're really, they're... Okay, this is pretty much me. And I think others that, well, I know others that's on the commission. She's good.
Ready, Kim?
Yes. Here, I can hand it out while you start.
I don't know. It's just a little, I guess, stores.
Okay.
There's nothing on them. How far are these? We get up to the desk. And I took a picture of it and it was there. He said he tried to tell me something. That's...
Case number 1826. Request to hold a public hearing and forward a recommendation to the City Council on the request of Thomas Bondage of Sunloan, Illinois, number 2 Incorporated, to obtain a special use with waivers for a convenience cash business in a Class C1 General Commercial District for the property located at 3202-3208 North University. Parcel identification numbers 1429-451-011 and 1429-451-012, Peoria, Illinois, Council District 2. And the petitioner is requesting to obtain a special use for convenience cash store within 1,500 feet of other existing convenience cash stores and within 1,500 feet of residential zone districts. The stated intent of the Unified Development Code is to minimize the detrimental effects that certain convenience cash practices have on neighborhood character and housing values by regulating the density of payday lending businesses within the city of Peoria. A special use required in this case because the distance requirements are not met. If waivers are not required, then this would not be required. So development items. This is an existing location. Therefore, no changes provide, is proposed for parking, mechanicals and utilities, landscaping. The use, we've just talked about the separation requirement, where staff is recommending a denial of waivers related to that. signage, replacement signs are proposed for the wall and canopy. And that is a separate approval process. And the existing first turning sign post does not meet setback requirements from Hudson. A waiver is required for that. And should this be approved, staff would be supportive of that. Exterior lighting, no change is proposed. Setback waiver of a 20-foot setback requirement to allow existing conditions. For height, no change to the existing height. Again, there's no new construction. That is proposed. Subject property contains two parcels that comprise 0.26 acres of land, developed with a commercial structure intended for retail and office use. The property is currently zoned Class C1 General Commercial. It's surrounded by the C1 district to the north, the C1 and C2 Large-Scale Commercial District to the west, and C1 District to the south, and R3 Single Family District to the east. 1931 through 58 was zoned A for one-family dwelling. 58 to 63 zoned E for commercial. 63 through 90 zoned C2 Neighborhood Commercial. And 90 to the present, C1 General Commercial. Regarding standards, the finding is that it does meet the standard for no detriment to public health, safety, or general welfare, no injury to other property or diminishing of property values, no impediment to orderly development, provides adequate facilities, ingress and egress designed to minimize traffic congestion. And in fact, the current configuration is a result of recent improvements to the University Street. NA for public service. And for district regulations, again, as noted, for separation requirements from other cash stores and to residential, if you see residential is immediately abiding the property, the separation requirements are not met. Therefore, this special use request. Critical plan success factors, grow employers and jobs, reinvest in neighborhoods, City Council Strategic Plan goals, smart population growth. The Development Review Board does recommend denial due to inability to meet these standards. In your packet, you've got the aerial. And then this shows a radius of 1,500 feet, which is how far away you need to be from other cash stores. Noting from Highway 150 to, where my cursor is, to Forest Hill Avenue. That is a distance of approximately 2,722 feet. So therefore, right in the middle of that obviously would be the 1,500 feet. There are a number of other cash stores at that location. What I handed out was back from when we first adopted this ordinance in 2008. There were a number of cash stores existing at that time that already didn't meet the separation requirements. And so those were considered grandfathered. And you'll see, I believe it's the square, actually, on the, and sort of in the middle of your page. That's kind of where the cluster that we're talking about already exists. This is a location that is moving, they're existing a little bit further to the north, and they're moving to this location. This location used to be Dijor bridal store. And that's where they're requesting to go. The petitioner, there's four of them present. They are authorized to speak on behalf of the applicant. They are present, and I can answer questions as well.
You said they're moving from an existing location?
They are a little bit further to the north. The address... Sorry, you had it by heart.
We can probably get that from them.
Okay. I think you're right.
What'd you say, Nick?
You're saying 3320.
3320?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. I can confirm that right now. 3320. And we have Title Max loans at 3308, first payday loans at 3326. And the proposed one is at 3204. And again, the petitioner is present for details.
Any other questions for the city? Petitioner, would I come forward, please?
Kim, I got a quick question. I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner. The, I know this is a 2008, a 10-year-old thing, but is the, are the stores that are shown on there still there or under a different name? Do you know? You may not know, I'm just asking.
I do not know. That's why in purpose I didn't list these because I'm also, the more I learned about this, there's some nuances on if it's actually a... There's different types of payday cash stores.
Okay.
The petitioner may be able to clarify that as well.
But we, but we know for certain that there are... You said Title Max and first payday loans are existing and they're well within the maximum, maximum distance that's the ordinance states.
Like I said, the subject property is right here in blue. And this is your 1,500-foot radius.
The question that you just didn't clarify was that there are different types of cash stores. So does the new ordinance that was written in 2008 separate those different types of cash stores? And does the 1,500 feet still applicable for those different types of stores? Because that all fits into information. And if this is not a current map of what goes on is what's going on today, we can't...
We do know these others exist. And the other issue is the proximity to the residential that does exist. As far as clarity on the definition, I don't know that what we have on the books is negated. I just, as far as getting specific information on what is what it gets... I was trying to keep it clear, but maybe I made it muddy by not providing the list. That is something I can do. I know that, I've discussed this with the petitioners as well. And maybe after their testimony, if there's still some lack of clarity, I can take some direction.
Okay. Petitioner, would I come forward, please? Could you please state your name and address for the record?
It's TO Box 680927 in Fort Payne, Alabama. I'm a regional supervisor over the Alabama locations and in Illinois. We are bulked in the state of Illinois under the same lending license from the State Banking Department. So I think that's where some of the confusion is. But we do different things than payday or title. For example, if you walk into, I think this one was called First Payday Loans. If you walk in there, you typically will have proof of a bank account and a check and your ID. And they will hold the check until your next payday. With title loans, you typically will take your title in there with your ID and proof of income typically. And they'll loan you money to be all paid back in one lump sum. What we do is traditional installment lending. We take a consumer's application based on their stability, their ability to repay the loan, and we look at their credit willingness with pulling their credit. In turn, we turn around and we do report to the credit bureaus on a monthly basis to help them establish credit. There's a lot of people like myself who don't have a parent that can sign with them to get their credit started or don't really have that opportunity to get their foot in the door. So we do believe that we provide a different type of service. But we also understand that we can't change the laws of being grouped in with that group right now. We would like you to consider, and we appreciate your consideration, that we have been doing business in Peoria and helping out the residents since 2001. We've been in our current location for over eight years. We do feel like we have a lot of strong ties to the communities. We, I won't go into all the talking points, but I did provide that for you guys. But, you know, we're able to help out over 1,200 community members, whether it be a car repair or a last-minute, you know, emergency or medical. I think the biggest difference between us and them is that we try to give back to their credit. We try to help them build some, establish some type of credit. We also do installment lending, so they don't have to come back and pay it in 30 days. Our terms can go anywhere from seven or eight months all the way to 36 because we lend up to $4,000. So we would greatly appreciate the opportunity to be able to move. Amy can talk a little bit more about that. But, you know, where we're at now, just even driving by it, we're connected to a restaurant, right? And there is extremely limited parking. And so servicing our customers right now, I think it causes more congestion where we're at currently versus where we'd like to move, which is, you know, from 3320 up to 3204. The spaces have, the space itself has more parking. It's easier, easily accessible for handicapped or disabled. There's a ramp in front of the building. I think it's easier to get out of the new location than where we're at currently. Can she add anything?
She may.
Okay.
State your name and address for the...
Yeah, absolutely. Hello, my name's Amy Myers. My address is 414 East Boston Avenue in Monmouth, Illinois. I just, you know, I just wanted to say that we've always done great business in Peoria. We do just want to move locations basically for the visibility for our customers and for our employees. We do, in office, we have five employees that are residents of the city of Peoria. And it just, the square footage would be better, too. We like to give back to the community. We do a lot of in-community involvement activities. We do like customer appreciation days where maybe we'll have like, try to do a bounce house or something like that. So just having more location and bigger space and bigger parking. And that's really why we want to move essentially is to help our customers and to give us more visibility.
Thank you. Mr. Yanis?
And this probably does not have anything to do with your zoning request. Is your interest rate normally the same as some of these other cash stores?
We, no, sir. We find that ours is lower than like the payday and the title. So the, you have APR and then you have actual interest. Our APR, you know, I don't want to be really transparent with anybody that we're trying to get permission from. It can be as, the top-out APR is 92, 94 percent. But that's not the actual interest on a loan. You know, so if you take the, in the example that I gave, the actual interest on this $500 loan would be 28 percent.
28 percent?
Yes, sir. And the APR with payday and title, it can go up to 300 percent.
Thank you.
I guess my question's going to go back to Kim. They stated that they were in business in Peoria in 2001. This map and the ordinance was done in 2008. That means they were grandfathered in. Their existing, their existing place would still have 1,500 to residential. Isn't that correct?
So what I've just mapped out here shows an 843 feet span from 3326 North University, 3308, and then at the proposed location.
I understand that. But my question again to you was, if they started business in 2001, which was pre the ordinance in 2008, they would have been grandfathered in, correct?
Yeah.
And their existing location, where it sits today, is less than, is the same as they are now because they're backed up to residential, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
May I answer your other questions from before? Straight out of the ordinance, convenience cash businesses include payday loan businesses and title loan businesses. So it is, they are in fact all lumped together. Sorry on that.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question. Knowing that there is obviously a, at least a technical or actual zoning issue with the distances, have you explored other options? Because you obviously don't have a huge footprint and there's lots of vacancies in different, you know, not too far from this location. So I would ask, have you, have you looked at those so you wouldn't even had to come before this body or the City Council?
Yeah, so we did a lot of research. We typically try to be pretty diligent in that. We typically try to be pretty diligent in that. A lot of the other vacant locations that we had looked at didn't fit maybe the square footage need, or the exposure, or same traffic flow that we currently have. We felt like going into this, that this was the best, the best location choice for us. Unfortunately, although I've been with the company since 2007, I wasn't in leadership back, you know, eight years ago, or when this ordinance happened. I think the ball was dropped on our part with trying back then to make sure we were in the ordinances and understood the new ordinances. I don't think we were informed of that, and so I would rather have not gone through this either, but we do want to be in compliance, and we definitely don't want to be a pain in the community. But we felt like this is, this was the most, the best location for us.
If I can speak, I'm actually the direct supervisor in this location, Holly, I report to Holly. I did scout out several locations. A lot of it was the square footage, or what would need to be done inside of the building in order to meet our needs. You know, we do have some safety concerns, so safety of where our safe is sitting, would we have to do structural wall moves, things like that. This was a nice, big, open location with several like smaller dressing rooms to the back, because it was a bridal tuxedo shop, that we were able to just then incorporate into our rooms that we can use to put files and people's records and stuff and store them safely. So a lot of that was determined on why we picked this location.
Okay. Does you, this is sort of a general question, real quick, does your particular business benefit from being near similar competitors, or not necessarily?
It's a mixed bag of tricks. In Alabama, I know that doesn't, it's not relative to here, but we typically are in the same shopping center as a world finance or security finance, and in some cases even the payday side. On one hand, it's an alternative to payday, so we can use that when we are selling to the customer, like, don't go to the payday, at least come to us and let you get established, then pay us off and go to a bank, you know, go to a credit union, do, get out of us, too, but don't go there. In other cases, like in this situation, you know, I'm not familiar with the exact distance, but just going by the two locations, it actually looks like we would be separating ourselves, because currently it's, you know, us, then Title Max, then the payday. This is actually taking us further away from them, putting us in our own little location, which I think could also be a benefit, an alternative, just being away from boom, boom, boom.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the petitioner? Thank you. Anybody would like to give public testimony for or against this case? State your name and address for the record.
My name is Tanya Walker. I reside at 3306 North Sherwood Avenue, which is currently actually less than 100 feet away from the current location. I will say that I am also the branch manager of the current location, and will be hopefully moving with the new location. I have actually lived in this neighborhood on and off for the last 25 years. It is actually my best friend's residence. I pretty much hung out there as I grew up. There have been several loan companies in this area over the years. There has never been a detriment or an impact to the community. If anything, it is uplifting to the community to have somewhere to go that is able to help them put money back in the community, and to stay in the community and help the local businesses.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Someone would you like to read the findings of facts, please?
These are the findings of fact for a special use. The establishment, maintenance, or operation of a special use will not be detrimental to or endanger the public health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare.
I see.
Do we all agree with that? Rich?
Go ahead.
The special use will not be injurious to the uses and enjoyment of other property in the immediate vicinity for the purposes already permitted, nor substantially diminish and impair property values within the neighborhood in which it is to be located. The establishment of the special use will not impede the normal and orderly development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Adequate facilities, access roads, drainage, and/or necessary facilities have been or will be provided, yes. Adequate measures have been or will be taken to provide ingress and egress so designed as to minimize traffic congestion in the public streets, say yes. The proposed special use is not contrary to the objectives of the official comprehensive plan of the city of Peoria. I agree. If a public use or a use providing public utility service, that such use or service shall meet a demonstrable public need and provide a public benefit. And the last one is the special use shall in all other respects conform to the applicable regulations of the district in which it is located. It appears to not, and that's what the staff communication, all of their opinions was that they were positive to all the other elements except this last one, which is the technicality of the proximity to other convenience cash stores. That does not comply.
Correct. Those are the findings of facts. Have a motion for we get into discussion.
I'll make a motion to approve Siskiyou's request with waivers.
I'll second.
So we have a, we have a motion on the table to approve their request. My comment on this is simple. I take a look at a couple of things. Number one, we just granted another type business like that, move up on Long Memorial because of the Pottery situation. This company has been in existence since 2001, they were grandfathered in, they're moving, what, 1,000, not even 500 feet down the street, they haven't provided, and we've had no problems with them being there. They're just, it's an existing company. I think we should allow them to continue to grow and serve the public the way that they are, and it's not like they're moving across town, they're staying in the same footprint and same neighborhood. So I would support this motion and move forward.
Well, I don't disagree with you, but if this was a brand-new one, I would be voting against it.
If I would be voting against it, too, if it was a brand-new one.
Getting overtaken with these, as I say, if this was a brand-new one and not a relocation, I would not vote for this.
I would agree. And I would, too, but because it's existing and been in existence and grandfathered in, that's the only thing that's changing my mind on it.
Mr. Chairman, may I ask, since we're in discussion, may I ask a question of staff?
Sure.
Kim, the petitioner had stated that this move, you know, to the, to the south on University would actually move them farther away from existing adjacent similar businesses. I don't know if that's true. Do you happen to know, or maybe any of the other commissioners are familiar enough? I just looked at this site, I didn't look at all the other, you know, ones that weren't on the map essentially, but I think that's a consideration, at least philosophically, that it is an existing business, we know that. It was in existence before this ordinance was adopted, we know that, and if its move is actually, the goal of the ordinance is to not have them too close together, but if this move makes it further apart from others, that's, that is certainly more in keeping with the spirit of the ordinance as well, even though it technically does not meet the requirement. And we know it's not, it's not a new business that doesn't exist, it's a relocation of a business, because they need more parking and more space. So that was my question, Kim, is it, would you happen, can you see from a map if it's, and I don't need to the exact foot, but does it appear to be, but does the move appear to make them further away from existing?
From that Title Max store, they're moving, they're moving about...
It's about 330 feet, if I'm not mistaken.
They're moving at least 200 feet further from Title Max, and they're moving...
Yeah, 330. And they're not moving closer to another existing one, is my really kind of question.
Not that I can remember.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second on the table. Do you need to...
I don't know if you want me to answer. They're going to be 298, about 300 feet from 3308, which is Title Max. So you're still seeing one every block.
I missed it, I'm sorry.
Concentration, you're still seeing one every block, and they're, they're moving 300 feet south of Title Max.
Which they were almost adjacent to before. Anyway, we have a motion and a second on the table. All in favor of the motion to approve, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same thing. Motion passes. So they'll go in front of the city council on the 26th. Fort Payne, that's home of Alabama, isn't it?
Yeah, yeah. Alabama.
I used to live in Madison, so I don't know...
Yes, ma'am.
At this point, is there any citizens who'd like to address the commission? Seeing none? Looks like we have election of officers. I'm good with keeping it the same if anybody else wants it, I don't care, whatever, you guys' feelings. We have election of officers, I see on the...
Do you want to wait till Michelle is here and till...
Can we do it next time?
And Ed is here?
I'll postpone it. Idea.
I don't know if we're ever going to get a full quorum between now and the end of the, I mean, with summer and vacations.
I'd make the motion, then we wait till we have a full, full commission. Nothing...
We have a, we have a motion and we have a second. Ever signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Did you get that?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, that, just out of courtesy to Michelle and Ed, I would think.
Yeah, sure.
Um, adjournment?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? See you guys next month.
Thanks for the pen, man.
July, um, wait a minute. What's the May 8th?
Mm-hmm.
What's the July meeting date going to be?
Just scan that yourself.
The 5th?
And is it, is this just like a one-time use, or is it...
Anybody going to be out of town for the 4th?
I don't know.
I'll be here.
Yeah, it's next, the Thursday after, which is...
Be out of town? You'll be here.
Well, I'll be a little...
You'll probably be on one then.
I'm a...
Actually, you're voting, I got it.
We could probably do the, hey...
Kerry Lynn.
Kerry Lynn. And where you coming from?
The one through the...
Okay.
Probably U-Haul.
Yeah, that's where you're coming from?
Yeah.
Yeah, cool, welcome.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And what is going to be the role of your department?
Yeah.
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 Yeah.